4:00 PM, we're gonna open the meeting of the Ashburnham Board of Selectmen. This is a virtual Zoom meeting. Any votes taken will be done by roll call. And we'll start by approving the agenda.
Motion to approve is written.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay. We're gonna start before the usual citizen comment. We're gonna start with the tax classification hearing. And let me get my little format here. All right, could I have a motion to open the tax classification hearing?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay. And I wanna welcome Michael Saltzman. And he's gonna present to us the, he's one of our assessors. He's gonna present to us the tax rate for this year. Michael, to you.
All right, thank you. So, the purpose of this meeting is actually to decide whether we are going to do a single tax rate or a split tax rate, meaning the residential class versus the commercial and industrial classes would have different rates. The way we do that is we take a look at the values in town and what the tax rate is going to be. And then we have to decide what we're going to do about the residential factor shift. This year, the levy, which is the amount of tax that is gonna be raised from property taxes, is going to be at about fifteen thousand, two hundred and three, four hundred, fifteen million, two hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars. All of these numbers that I'm talking about are preliminary based on what we have now. They aren't finalized until they're approved by DOR. But, so, that's gonna be a slight increase, it's a 3.25% increase over last year's levy. It's still well under the levy ceiling, which is the maximum amount that we are allowed to tax based on Proposition Two and a Half. This year, we've had new growth revenues of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. So, we've had new construction, new lots accounted for an increase in the levy. So, for 2021, we are going to have a... Sorry, I'm looking at my notes here. We're looking at a total town valuation of seven hundred and forty-six million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. So, that's gonna be our tax base. And with the amount of levy that we needed to raise, that means that our tax rate is set to be twenty dollars and fifty-five cents this year. Now, that does represent an increase in the tax rate, but because the valuations in town, which are based on our 2019 sales, did not need to go up, we're actually going to see a very slight decrease in the average single-family house tax bill of... So, it's roughly staying the same, down about eight dollars per year. Most of our classes, as I said, did not see an increase in value. Now, values are based on sales from the year 2019 for the residential class and the years 2018 and 19 for the commercial, industrial, and condominium classes, because we have, we don't have enough sales in those classes to satisfy Department of Revenue standards. So, we're able to look back for two years for those sales. Most of the sales that we were seeing indicated that our values, which we brought up considerably last year, are now in line with what we're seeing for sales. So, the valuations are in most classes staying the same. The condominium class is the only class that was lagging the market, and they increased at about 6.1%, point zero one percent. So, the condominium class did go up a bit. We have only one condominium development in town, but the sales in that town were indicating that we were behind the, behind the market. So, as I said, the assessed, the assessed value and levy get divided out and we wind up with a tax rate for 2021 of twenty dollars and fifty-five cents, which would, as I say, be a slight increase in the rate, but a slight decrease in the average single-family house bill. So, it's in general, a relatively flat year for taxation. But, if we wanted to consider the possibility of shifting the tax burden to the commercial class and their commercial, industrial, personal property classes, we could do that, but because Ashburnham's tax base is almost entirely residential, any shift in the residential rate would be negligible compared to the increase to the commercial, industrial, and personal property rate. Specifically, this year, if we were to lower the residential rate by four cents, so down to twenty dollars and fifty-one cents, that would raise the commercial rate by a dollar. In towns such as Ashburnham where the vast majority of the popular, of the tax base is residential, we do not recommend that a split rate is used. So, we would recommend voting for a single tax rate. And if, if anyone has any questions, I can answer them now.
Bill or Rosemarie?
I'm fine.
I'm good.
Okay.
So, there is at the, at, I don't know if you have a copy of the memo that I sent out to Brian, but there is a proposed motion at the end of that memo to adopt a single, single rate, which would be a residential factor of 1.0.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we move on. Is there anybody that would like to address the board on any matter not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing nothing. Town administrators update.
I want to thank, I know Michael just got off, but Michael, thank you for that. And thank you, Board of Selectmen, that's very nice to get our tax rate set. So, what that allow is, allow the collector to be able to process the bills and then submit the bills out to get them mailed before and delivered before the end of December, which is the legal requirement, so thank you for that. On COVID-19, there's been a continues to be a rise locally with COVID-19 cases. We haven't seen that really decrease too much. We had one bad week a couple of weeks ago, but since then, it's been still steady. So, hopefully, you know, that monitors and starts reversing its course and starts going back the other way. So, Town Hall is still open by appointment only, and we're very cautious on who we're letting in due to the fact that there are more cases locally. So, on the financial update, spending freeze is still on. We did, we have been checking the current revenues now that we have the November 1st tax collections in, and we are very close to where we projected in total. So, that's a little reassuring that that's come in that way. We've pretty much closed the books for June for 2020. The outside auders are due in the first week of December, so they can start getting the audit done. And DOR on Friday, they approved that free cash without needing a draft audit. Last year, they required a draft audit, this year they did not. So, we're very pleased to get that. It was a team effort, that free cash was certified, and I wanna put a special thank out to Julia Costello, the town accountant. She did a wonderful job getting all that into DOR and submitted cleanly, so that we had a fast turnaround from them. Any questions on anything on the financial update?
I'm all set, Rosemarie?
I'll set.
Bill?
Just, just a comment. You know, Brian, we, we put a lot of pressure on you and your folks to, you know, get this fiscal year wrapped up, but I know there was a few things that you still had to get squared away, you know, due to prior administrations and prior accounts and things. So, just a congratulations to you and your team for getting this squared away. And I think it's another box we can check off and move forward in a very positive manner.
Thank you.
I agree.
I agree as well. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome. So, the next one is the Marijuana Review Team. We haven't had a meeting, but Eddie Flowers had to reschedule their public outreach meeting. So, the next, their public outreach meeting is now December 1st at 5:30 PM. And that's a Zoom meeting that should be able to be attended if you wanna attend it.
Is that gonna be on the calendar, the website calendar or?
It will be, you should be able to go to the calendar and click it, Mary.
It's already on there.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
All right. Bylaw review committee. Final draft mission statement and assign. And...
I'm confused as to why that's on the agenda, 'cause we voted on the mission statement and we sent out the, the bylaw review information to all the different boards. They have to get back to us on December 15th. So, I, I was confused by that, Leo.
My mistake. The, the agenda came out late this week, and I didn't pass it on to you guys like usual. So, given what you just said, why don't we just go right over that one?
I have a question, Leo.
Okay.
So, we do need to appoint a Board of Selectmen representative. Are we ready to do that, or do we need to hold off on that?
We can do that, or we can do it tonight that we do the other people? Either way.
All right, then let's, let's hold off and we'll do them all at the same time.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, now, the pavement management plan, is there anything to report this week on that?
Sure, Bill, I'll speak, I guess, so...
You start, if I need to fill in, I will.
Yeah, so Steve, Randy, myself, Bill sat down this week, and we're very close to the wording of it. The last thing we have is the street listings to make sure they're accurate. We're waiting for a final report, Excel spreadsheet from Beta, just to confirm that we have, how it's gonna be listed, it's gonna list the town roads, private roads, and then there's gonna be descriptions on the side whether they're or if they're discontinued roads, or what the status of the roads are. And that's kinda where we are at this point in time. We should have something fairly soon, I would hope for it for the next meeting.
So, just to throw a couple of other things in there. When this was originally proposed, we had talked about a five-year pavement management plan, and we collectively agreed on Thursday that we would change that to a three-year plan. And the, Steve had brought that up, and the concern was, you know, the uncertainty of everything that's going on now. If we put a five-year plan together, would we be able to actually follow through on years four and five, not knowing in advance what the financial situation's going to be? So, we all thought that three years probably made more sense in that when we commit to the three years, everybody's confident that we're gonna be able to deliver exactly what we said we're going to deliver in the three years. And if you remember, this is a, it's a three-year plan, but it's updated every year. So, it's a three-year rolling plan, at least that's, that's what the proposal's gonna be, three years, three years versus five. And then, as Brian said, there's a lot of data that came out in that Beta report, and we don't wanna put out a, you know, 22-page document. So, we're going through and we're condensing a lot of that into what we believe to be is the most important information for people, the taxpayers, to see. So, that's a work in progress and well, and, and I would definitely like to have this on the meeting for December 7th to vote on. We, I kinda made an unofficial commitment that I wanted this out by the early part of December, and we'd be able to do that if we're able to get it on the agenda for the 7th. Of course, you'll get a copy of it in advance, but that's, that's the goal.
I see Mary writing it down for the, for that December date. Bill, just something just came to me when you said public roads, private roads, discontinued roads. Given how there's been recent talk, could you also, as you give those descriptions, mark the ones that are scenic roads? Just so we can start getting that out there to people that we do have designated scenic roads?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I mean, we have the information and just be a matter of, you know, maybe we could, you know, change, put them in red or something on the, on the Excel spreadsheet, highlight them that way as being a scenic road. But I, I wouldn't think that would be a problem. Do you think that's an issue, Brian?
No, if we put an asterisk next to them with the key code saying scenic road, something of that nature, so that we can distinguish them from the others, 'cause if people print it out, black and white, they might not see the color once they print it. So, maybe an asterisk or something, but we'll figure out a way to do that.
Given that the scenic roads were passed back in 1974, and recently, there were issues with construction going on that was in violation or didn't quite follow the policies, if we start putting it out there, these are scenic roads. Even for people that don't understand, they may ask a question, and that'll eliminate probably some problems going forward.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
I, I had a recommendation too. I mean, as, as Leo said, you know, trying to avoid any confusion or misunderstanding. Can we put a little, you know, I guess, a paragraph in the management plan, letting people know how we fund paving our roads? There've been, there's been some confusion about, you know, the Complete Streets project and stuff like that, how that's working. People thinking that we're using money from paving the roads for doing those, the sidewalks. That's not the case. So, if we just had some sort of a paragraph showing folks how we get that money.
We're definitely gonna do that. I've already actually got, got the draft started on that. One of the things that I recently did was go back and look at Chapter 90 funding all the way back to the year 2000, and I've got it every year. So, we're gonna put that together and, and, you know, put some averages together and look at the last five years and explain to people exactly that, you know, where the, what the primary source of our funding for roads is. So, much, much like we did after the fact with Complete Streets, we wanna make sure we get the information out in front of this so that it could potentially answer some of the questions people may have out there.
That sounds great, thanks.
Excellent. Another thing, Bill, you might wanna mention.
Leo, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I can only take two suggestions at a time, so...
With the going back to the year 2000, I remember being on capital planning when it first came into existence. And I remember DPW saying, out of like 21 pieces of equipment, 19 had been purchased through Chapter 90 funds, and just let the people know that capital takes care of buying equipment now, so all of Chapter 90 goes to roads. Although it was a legal thing to buy roadworking equipment, we as a town had made the decision to put the money into the roads directly.
Will do.
Always give a little bit more information so people know what's going on and why it's going on. All right. Now, we got Affordable Housing Committee appointments. There was a mistake that we also have Cultural Council. That's going to come up under Other Business. So, right now, we have Affordable Housing Committee appointments. And Mary, you had the names on that, or was it you, Rosemarie?
Mary has them.
Okay.
I think I see one of them on here, Sheila is on here. We have Sheila DeFano, Donna Boucher, and Erica Craig. I think the only one I see on here is Sheila.
Okay. Bill or Rosemarie, do you have any questions on any of these people?
I don't. They all provided letters of interest and resumes, filled out the volunteer applications. And, and all three of them, in my opinion, are qualified. I mean, they have experience in housing. So, that's pretty good.
And we're always complaining we can't get people, so we're not gonna let them get away. Could I have a motion?
I would move the three appointments to the Affordable Housing Committee as read by Mary Callender.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Excellent, and I wanna thank everybody for taking the interest to join this committee.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Now, we're on to the Board of Selectmen task list. And I had sent an email that for this meeting, I didn't wanna go through the whole list. I wanted to tackle a couple things so that we can start to get some progress. And those are gonna be the bylaw review for the general bylaws, which our board is going to do, and Board of Selectmen policies. Rosemarie, I've been reading the, the thing you sent around with the questions on the bylaws. I don't know, did you get to see that, Bill?
I believe I did.
Okay. I would like us all to, all of us put in our comments and do the same thing with the Board of Selectmen policies. And then I would like to bring it up at a working meeting in the future. I'd like to do it sooner than later, but I would like to wait for the COVID to be on the downside rather than the upside before we meet together in person. And do you guys agree with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that works for me.
It would be nice if we could have one, obviously, but, you know, obviously, our health is more important than...
Exactly.
And this, yeah.
And we're gonna have a couple other things come up at that meeting also. I would like to shoot for sometime in December, but again, it's gonna be watching those COVID numbers.
So, so Leo, we had originally talked about at the last meeting, a working session on December 3rd. So, that's gonna be not happening?
Yeah, I kinda would like to wait to see what those COVID numbers are. I just don't wanna put any one of us at risk or other people that are in the building.
I mean, well, you know, hey, this is just from observation. If we're gonna see an uptick, it's gonna be after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that's probably...
Yeah, the third probably is not the best date.
That's true. Would you know, Brian or Mary, and, and I know this is really asking for a lot, but in the, the record of town council opinions, is there anything in there to do with Board of Selectmen policies that maybe the three of us haven't had direct access to? That we may wanna look over for this upcoming meeting?
I can certainly take a look at her opinions in the past, just to see if there's anything relative to policies.
Okay. Because, go ahead.
The, the two that she did look at when I was chair was the agenda policy and the acceptance of gifts.
And are those listed on the, in the Selectmen files that we have online?
They are.
Okay. Then I guess you don't have to do that, Mary, save you the work.
No, but, but she didn't look at all of them, she's only looked at those two.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, she just said that they're fine. I mean, we can change them, but there wasn't any changes, particularly the acceptance of gifts, because there's a, a reference to an MGL.
Okay.
And the agenda policy was more on trying to do what we were supposed to do.
Okay. And I've looked over that one already. I just wanted to make sure there was nothing in that file that we don't have in our file. So, when we look over everything, we'll be looking over everything.
Yeah, I don't know. There was apparently a binder.
Yes.
But I've never seen it.
Okay. All right. We got a little bit of time. Is there anything pressing that either of you wants to cover real quick on the Board of Selectmen task list? Rosemarie, the letters are all out.
I don't have, I don't have the task list.
Okay.
Mary, thanks for doing that.
All right. And speaking of letters, the ones that we were gonna send out on the scenic roads. Has anybody done anything with them? I haven't. Mary, had you put anything together on that?
I wasn't sure if that was gonna come from the Planning Board. I know they discussed sending out letters. Again, we're still waiting for pricing on the signs. And to get an example, I did send an example that Westford, Massachusetts used to our site. See if, you know, and I think Planning Board said that they might be willing to take that cost on. They have a small, small budget, but we don't have the actual number figure yet, so...
Okay. But I know we were gonna send letters to some of our local Realtor people just to get it out there.
Roger, I, I think he's on here, he was, he was having issues with his internet. So, but I know that they discussed sending it out, so I'll follow up with Roger and see where that stands.
Okay. Yeah, I did, Leo, I did get your letter, so thank you.
But I'm talking now on the letters that we were gonna send out to the real estate people?
I haven't seen any of that, not yet.
Okay.
And as far as, you know, I think, Mary, I had asked if we had an example of what the sign was gonna be?
Yeah, and I, I sent an example of Westford sign, because we were trying to get one from our vendor, but we had not one.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll have something to, to talk about at Wednesday's meeting then.
Yep.
It was a letter to the Realtors, but also to the tree removal companies that work in town.
Exactly.
I had something to bring up. I don't know if it's on the task list, but we do have a, we were notified of a opportunity to apply for the Shared Streets and Spaces, a winter grant possibility. So, this was a grant that we did not apply for over the summer. We talked about it, and we actually recommended that it be applied for, but it was never applied for. So, this, this is another opportunity for us. The information came in on it, and I discussed it with Brian earlier today about, we really need to zero in on this. Most of the communities around us have applied for this grant, and they've gotten something, right? And we have an opportunity to get a piece of, of the action, so to speak, as well. One of the things that they talk about in the Shared Streets and Spaces is improvements to sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic calming. We are doing the Complete Streets project. And one thing I threw out to Brian was the possibility of somehow either using some of the Shared Streets money, if we were to be awarded, to enhance that project, or maybe even pay to extend that project farther down Main Street if we were eligible, 'cause new sidewalks is included in that. And that would be something that we could, you know, just continue to... You know, just continue to work our way down Main Street, improving walkability. Calming traffic, helping our downtown businesses, continue to do business during COVID. Making it easier for handicapped and disabled individuals to be able to get in and off the sidewalk. Make it safer for individuals to cross the street. These are all things. And if I read the announcement correctly. That particular item can award up to $300,000. So why not try is the way I look at it.
Is this a no match grant?
As far as I know, it's no match. And it needs to be completed by May 31st. So knowing the complete streets is something that. We want to pull together and get done first thing in the spring. You know, if if this is something that we could grab and do for. Extending Main Street, you just have the same individual, essentially. You know, the same contractor and we just do it all in one fell swoop. I don't know if that's possible, you know, Brian's the procurement guy. But, yeah, I mean, it sort of makes sense to me. But there's also other opportunities in the shared streets in spaces program as well. So, you know, it's, like I said, people are getting 50, $100,000. They're applying for it multiple times, other communities, and getting multiple grant awards, and we haven't applied once.
So this is the shared streets grant?
Shared streets and spaces. So we had discussed applying for it over the summer. To create a bike lane. To Briggs. It's on our complete streets prioritization plan. And we didn't do it. But this round of the grant is a little bit more flexible. And maybe, maybe it would be possible to consider another project. That's on that complete streets project list, prioritization list. I don't know.
Is this, does this work like complete streets where you like apply for two or three? And they they prioritize it and award one? Or do you just apply for a specific?
You apply for a specific one, but you can apply multiple times. So there's actually four grants deadlines, if I remember correctly. I'm trying to find it. And the first one is the beginning of December. And it's something that we could. You know, we should seriously consider it.
Rosemary, this this grant, if I if I remember the summers version, these are awarded on a rolling basis. So it's not, it's not, everybody gets them in and they decide who's gonna get it. So if you're organized, you have a plan and you submit early. When the the bucket of money is full, you have a better chance.
That's correct. So. The one that I was looking at, it says Main Streets. Types of eligible projects. Investments in local downtowns and villages that repurpose streets, plazas, sidewalks, curbs. And parking areas to facilitate outdoor activities, winter programming. Including, but not limited to, facilities for eating, shopping, play. Community events and spaces for all ages, grant limit up to 300,000. Reimagine streets, creation of safe spaces for people walking and bicycling. By implementing low speed streets, shared streets, new sidewalks. New protected bike lanes, new off-road trails, new bicycle parking. New crosswalks, new traffic calming measures. And new ADA compliant ramps, grant limit up to $300,000.
The sidewalks, the ramps and the crosswalks all kind of fit into what's already begun.
Exactly.
Anybody? Anybody care to put that into a motion for us to apply?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansons, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes?
Bill Johnson, yes?
All right.
So Leo, Leo, let me ask you a follow up question now that we've taken the vote. Who's gonna spearhead this? Is this something that you want me to do this? You want, we leaving it to Brian? How how are we gonna proceed?
I was kind of thinking of somebody that's got all this information that she just gave us.
Yeah.
Would that be an issue?
Well, I said, you know, unless they've changed the grant application, it's really easy. The big thing is, is that whomever's spearheading this has to talk to and interface with Beta. Because, you know, we have a limit as to up, you know, up to $300,000. And, you know, what can we do? How far can we go down Main Street? Like, if I remember correctly, Bill at our last meeting talked about trying to figure out. Can we extend the complete streets project? Past the dentist office, right? And could we come up with how much money that is? You know, can we talk to Beta about, well, maybe not just in front of the dentist office, but let's do the. The medical building, can we even get down or would it be advisable to get down to Central Street?
That would make sense.
Right, and then we finish to Central. But, you know, there's, there's other complications now. You don't want to get too far into the intersection, right?
True.
So.
But in front of the medical center, that'd be a perfect spot for the handicapped access, because. People with issues are gonna be going to the medical center.
Correct. I mean, Bill, did you, you had mentioned you were gonna talk to the light plant about extending the poles. The light poles.
I have not had that conversation yet, but if if you want me to. You know, I can kind of spearhead this thing. I, you know, again, I wasn't involved, well, I wasn't. Intimately involved with complete streets, but I certainly have familiarized myself with what's going on there, so. If you're okay with it, then why don't I just run with it and I can get with Steve and Brian and. And Beta, which, you know, because we're already doing some of that work for the pavement plan. And see if we can come up with the answers to some of those questions in pretty short notice and see if we can get the application out there.
Yeah, it's due on December 4th. Is the first round and it's awarded by December 22nd. And the second one is the fifth. Awarded by the February 2nd. You know, I would, you know, say, hey, let's get it in as soon as possible because. The spending deadline is May 31st, so we would want it. You know, find out if we've got it, wrap it up and put it out to bid.
So did you say December 4th and December 5th? Oh, okay.
So December 4th would be great if we could make that deadline. Plus two, the money's gonna run out, right?
And from what you said earlier, we could apply both dates?
It says you can apply multiple times. Yeah, it says. Yeah, I mean, that's what it said before. People could do multiple elements. I'd have to double check and look at it. I just, I received a. An email from Ann Goby, so I haven't looked much beyond the press release.
So for example, say we applied on the 4th. And and we receive something to go from. Where complete streets ends up to the medical building, just for example. We could, we could apply for the January one to go the distance to Central Street, if I'm understanding it right.
Oh, I think we should go, you know, I don't know if it's possible, but I would go all the way to Central Street with this grant.
Okay, I'm just thinking of.
Unless there's some engineering reason why we can't, because we're getting too close to an intersection.
Now I'm thinking more of the cost, because nothing's cheap, but.
Well, $300,000 should at least get us to Central, because if I remember correctly. To get from Pleasant Street to Maple was like 400 or over $400,000.
Okay.
And that, you know, that was really pushing up to the complete streets limit, which is $400,000.
Okay.
Leo, I would think that if you applied for, if we applied for what we're talking about. I would think your second application would have to be a different project. You know, if you were gonna put a sidewalk or replace a sidewalk on Lawrence Street, for example.
Okay.
You know, that, I think, I think it's something like that. I don't think you can probably. Apply for the same project or a portion of the same project again.
Well, the other thing too is I would imagine if you got one of the bigger awards, you'd probably less likely to get. A second.
No, yeah. I'm just thinking if they say you can keep applying.
Yeah, like one of them here is establish new facilities for public buses, which doesn't apply to us. That limit is up to half a million. If you got a half a million dollar grant, I can't imagine they're giving you anymore.
That's true.
Yeah.
I was just thinking another one too is, there is a lot of pedestrian traffic up Memorial Drive and there's no sidewalk at all there.
No, that's true, but that's on complete streets. And if I remember correctly, they were looking at trying to make that two-way.
Okay.
So that, you know, I don't know how much that costs. I can't, I didn't look at. I I don't, I haven't, I don't have the prioritization plan right in front of me.
Okay. All right, Bill.
Possible. I'm not saying it's not possible. I'm just saying I don't know how much it would cost.
So for right now, it looks like it's gonna go to you, Bill, since you.
All right, I'll take it.
Okay. So now we will move on to approval of the minutes from November 2nd, 2020.
I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes for. Say November 2nd, as always said?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, for November 2nd, 2020, as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansons, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes?
Bill Johnson, yes?
All right. Now we come to other business. And we have, is it one or two names to be appointed to the Cultural Council?
One.
Okay.
And that's Joan Hathaway.
Okay, would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
I don't do motions.
Yes, I'll give you a motion to appoint Joan Hathaway to the Cultural Arts Council.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansons, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes?
Bill Johnson, yes?
All right. And now on to other business. Brian, are those people here that wanted to speak on that movie?
Sure, so I see. Yo is here, I see Damon's here. I think Adam is the other one. I haven't met him, but I think he's here. So little background is, they approached us, they they're trying to do, they're doing a film filming for Showtime. And they found Camp Collier to their liking and it comes through Gardner, but Camp Collier is. Where they're filming is in Ashburnham. So, Yo, Damon, why don't you give a little presentation if you don't mind?
Well, sorry. Thank you, everyone, for letting us have a few moments of your time. Thank you, Brian, for coming down and going over our project with us. I just wanted to say that we are going to operate within all of your guidelines. We've met with your fire safety and conservation people. Planning on moving forward with those temporary structure permits. And really looking forward to working in Ashburnham. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Bill Carraro, who is our producer. And also Adam Brightman. I don't know, I can't see him here, but he is also one of our line producers and production managers. We have Megan Yehoda, who is our associate producer, and Hill Park, who you also met, our location manager. So.
Hello, everybody. Just wanted to say, thank you for the opportunity to work in the region. And we know we have, you know, a lot of details to still work through, but as as Damon was saying. The site has already been surveyed and we have every confidence that, you know, we will work within the guidelines. That are being presented. And, you know, I just want to also mention. That, you know, as as a group, many of us have worked together over the years and. When we go into a community, we take that seriously. You know, we're all homeowners, we're all family. People and, you know, we want to be welcomed guests in your community. And the work that we're doing is for entertainment sake. At the same time, you know, we're all dealing with, you know, very serious. Extraordinary circumstances these days. We're extremely excited about getting back to work. But as as an industry, the film industry has one of the most robust and rigid help. And COVID-19 oversight protocols. And we take that more seriously than anything else, the health and safety. Of our crew and and the communities that we're working around are. You know, the priority. And we're happy to share those with you, for those of you that haven't seen them. But, you know, this, this, the work that we're planning is going to be planned strategically. And with with all of the precautions necessary, you know, to have success and. And to also, you know, leave, you know, our situation with everyone feeling was a great experience. On on all parts.
Two questions. When is your target date to begin? And when is your target date when this will be on the air?
As far as on the air, the target date would be starting. It's not slated yet for Showtime's calendar, but the ideal would be in the fourth quarter, starting in the fourth quarter. They and they air every week. They, it's not like Netflix where you binge. So probably starting in the fourth quarter of 2021. And as far as filming, first, we have to work out a lot of our other schedule. But we we want to take advantage of the winter. Because that's a big part of our storyline. And first and foremost, we have to get all of the the work done and and prepared for for our crews to be there. And so it would probably, you know, not, we begin photography at the end of January. But we probably wouldn't necessarily arrive at the camp until some weeks later. And and we don't have, we don't have that nailed down yet until we see how our our. Art department work is completed and and get their timeline. And also because we want to take advantage of the right weather pattern and hopefully get some snow. So we may be scheduling some work. And and in the region and then, you know, once we get a weather pattern that that, you know, will give us. The atmosphere we're looking for, we will then give everybody enough notice to know that we will, we will be there. But, you know, it's going to be over the course of of that, that that winter snow period.
Okay. Bill or Rosemarie, any questions?
No, I'm all set.
I have a question. Are you liberty to say what the project is?
We are. It's a Showtime relaunch of a very popular series. This is a 10-episode. One-off. It's a limited series of the the series Dexter.
Oh, cool.
Fill their name for the.
Don't say I told you.
Yeah, yeah. It's your secret safe with me.
And the public board we're here on.
Yeah.
Bulletin board.
So they'll have roughly a fair amount of people down there, so border health will be involved, police, fire, building. Conservation, conservation's walk through, because they've got to get through some wetlands, so they have some steel plates and they're working through them right now to get access. To where they want. They've been very pleased to do the walkthrough. They've been very open to listening to the town. And what we have. You know, my thing, just make sure, you know, if you can give credit to Ashburnham, we appreciate it. We know your access through Gardner. But, you know, we're proud of the town of Ashburnham and hope you are too.
Well, we wouldn't be going through all this effort if. If the setting wasn't right. It's a beautiful region. You're all very lucky to to be there full time. And we're we're happy to come in and and enjoy it while we're shooting.
Thank you.
I just, for one, I want to thank the the Board of Selectmen and Brian and Mary for, you know, having us and and sort of working, you know. Working with me on scheduling a scout with Richard Turcot, Richard Travers. And Chief Robert Plant, you know, truly, this has been, you know, overwhelmed me, helpful and. And the support that you guys have provided, you know, I couldn't. and the support that you guys provided, you know, I couldn't be able to get this done without you guys and, and we greatly appreciate um, your support and, and having us. I feel like I'm making a, a, our ME speech right now, but thank you very much.
You know, we look. Let's hope, let's hope.
You know, we look forward to working, you know, in Ashburnham. Um, and you know, this would be a, a collective effort where I'll be communicating um, with Brian, probably to a point where he's gonna get sick of me, but you know, I will uh, you know, every step of the way, we would um, you know, we'll be very forthcoming of what our, what our intentions are and our goal is. And, and we've actually gone ahead and started reaching out to the Nate, the residents on Brogdon Road and Brogdon Lane, which is sort of the residential area right around our uh, our, one of our sets. Um, unfortunately, we've discovered that some of the, some of the homeowners are only there during the summertime. Um, but we will uh, you know, work um diligently to make sure that everyone is, you know, aware of us and and make sure that we're communicated with them as well.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck to your project.
Excellent.
Thank you all.
We'll want a list of the best restaurants in town.
We can give you a few. We got a couple of places you can eat at.
Yep.
Good takeout.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you again for your time.
You're welcome.
See you in the neighborhood.
All right, now we're on to reminders, Bill.
Um, hold on, I've got a couple of things on, on the other business, Leo.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I just want to thank Lorraine De Souza for getting the annual report ready. Um, she went above and beyond kind of to make it look really nice. Um, they are in, and I'll let Mary talk on how you can get hold of them and how you can have access to them.
Again, yeah, I'd like to thank Lorraine. It was a collaborative effort between myself, Lorraine and uh, Rosemary. We all had our part in editing. I think she did a wonderful job. Think the town will be pleased. Um, they are available right now at town offices. If you, I do have a couple of people that have already requested them, so I will get them out to them. Um, and then eventually that we can offer them out at our special town meeting whenever that will be planned, so. Again, we thank Lorraine Susan and expressive print for all her efforts.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for your help also.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mary. I, I can't wait to see um, yours and Lorraine's work.
That's all I have, Leo. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Bill, now to you.
All right, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be Monday, December seventh, twenty twenty at six thirty PM, and that will be another Zoom meeting. And then um, at the last meeting, we talked about a uh, affordable housing survey that was going on, and I want to um, reread that announcement if I could. It's very important that we get as much participation in this survey as possible. So uh, the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen have engaged the services of the Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission, develop an up, in, an updated housing production plan in the housing chapter of the master plan. These housing documents will assist the town in developing proactive strategies for planning and developing housing by identifying and analyzing existing and future housing needs to provide a balance of local housing opportunities for our citizens. The housing survey will be released on November second, which is already out there. It'll be available on the town's website as a link directly to the survey. And, and will be also locally in businesses and municipal buildings. The survey will remain open until November thirtieth, and survey results will be presented to the Planning Board at a meeting in December. And I, I wanted to follow that up with two questions um, for the board and for Mary and Brian. The first one is, we have an email notification system that people can sign up for to get notices on things. Is it possible to send a notification out on this survey using that system?
Yes, I believe I, I spoke to Donna. I saw the previous email and um, she did send that notification out this evening. So if anyone's listed, they could got that survey. I believe she did it when they first posted it. But they re- um, reformatted or, or, or put it again on a headline, so that went out again tonight.
Excellent. And then the second question was, and in this, um, I don't know if this is doable or not. W- would this be something that would be appropriate for a code red um, use?
Um, I think in the past of code red, um, we've been kind of told by the police chief to limit our calls, the robocalls, because if we do too many of them, people just start ignoring them, and then when we try to get the real emergencies out, that's how it's been in the past, that we've only tried to keep it to um, elections and special town meetings, town meetings. Um, and obviously the emergency calls being by the police, which in our town, we're lucky that we don't have that many.
Well, I, I know we have a specific policy, and we discussed it earlier in the year. I haven't been able to find it, but I know it exists. So I'll, I'll get a look at that and see if it uh, if it meets the criteria. I, I understand that we don't want to certainly abuse the system, but when we have important things like this that we need to get out to everybody, uh, I think it's a justified uh, use of the system, but I'll do a little bit more research and get back to you.
Okay. Uh, on that, that note, I'm on the website. Um, we, the red banner across the top says Water Conservation twenty twenty Notice. What do you think if we put it up there?
Yeah, anything we can do to highlight uh, the need to get as many responses as possible on this, I think is good.
Yeah, I had spoken to Roger earlier today.
Water conservation, right? Now, there's not too many.
Yeah, there's not too many people watering the yard, but um, I, in speaking to Roger earlier today, he had said to me that they got sixty-four the first week and then it went down to one last week. One responded. So um.
Yeah, may, maybe we can also move that back up uh, you know, when it was on the front page there. Now I think the Alexa results and something else are in there. Maybe we could reposition that um, on the very first page, the homepage again, to make it front and center.
Yeah.
You can do that.
So if you don't do the housing thing, maybe we put the COVID stuff on the top again. Instead of water conservation. Just to suggest.
That's true too.
Yeah.
I think that's the water conservation got put up because DEP required us to extend it, so we had to make notification out. And that was one of the requirements by DEP to place in uncertain um, places within town, website being one.
Yeah, it expired November first, it says here, though.
But that's why I think it was just on the headline. We can certainly remove it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, since it says it was extended September thirtieth through November one.
Okay. I think we have one more item.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes?
Bill Johnson, yes?
Good night, everyone.
Good night, folks. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.